You're good?
Yeah.
Is everybody ready?
It's fine.
All right, I will call the meeting to order. Folks out in Facebook land, we're trying to livestream tonight. Hopefully it works. We're gonna do an abbreviated meeting tonight because of the situation. We're gonna go straight down to new business on our agenda. Consideration of the bids for Tower Park paving project.
Shall we call it?
I'll come back to that.
Okay.
Okay, Mayor Haas and members of council, we did receive bids for our resurfacing in Tower Park. This is outside of our street program. Melissa, if you could pull that diagram up. The areas that were bid include all the areas around Tower Park. You can see in this depiction what is scheduled for resurfacing. It's the new parking lot areas near the ball field, all of the parking areas around the mess hall. It includes Cochran Avenue, Alexander Circle. The Alexander Circle portion will be reimbursed through the contractor back there for their portion of that project. And then if you flip over to the next visual. It also includes the resurfacing areas of parking on the Shelter Free project, the access drive, the new parking, and the existing parking lot for that project. So all those are included in the bid process. There was an alternate bid that included sidewalk. If you go back to the last visual. That area coming along the ball field, I'll just point to it. That area right here past sidewalk, it's integral to the curb. The rest of that curving is included in this cost estimate, and that's an extruded curve around all those perimeters. The portion that I've just pointed to is an integral curved sidewalk, and we took that alternate bid out of consideration because our public work crew would do that work. It's a different process anyway, and we can perform that with significant savings, so we would take it out of the bid. The low bid amount was $243,576.75 from Eaton Asphalt. And again, that's absent the alternate bid, so staff recommends to approve Eaton Asphalt bid for that part of Tower Park.
Was there any consideration of pairing this with the street paving program later this year to save money, or would that not really do any, make a difference on the jobs?
It's a timing issue. All these are different timings. Yeah, we originally looked at it that way. But we waited to put all of these together, because they were in different timeframes as well, but we kinda paired them all together. This work is scheduled to be performed before any activity ever took place.
So the performed date is?
Yes.
That makes sense.
I think the performed, I can't recall, sometime in June is the performed by date.
Any other discussion or questions?
I'll move approve.
Second. Will call both please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Beazle?
Aye.
Mr. Blau?
Aye.
All right, we're gonna move down to Finance Committee report on dispersments.
They all just convoluted.
Sorry, we're doing it backwards today.
That's okay.
We're trying to get through the stuff that has to get done, and then we'll go back to reports and other things that we want to see.
Okay. Report of dispersments, February 8th through March 13th, 2020. General fund, $327,575.52. Tower park fund, $10,922.82. Public Works KDOT fund, $63,975.19. Reoccurring debt service fund, $1,140.88. CBD revitalization, $21,191.67. Waste fees, $95,766.97. Police and fire pension fund, $522,468.97. We, the undersigned members of the Finance Committee, recommend that warrants numbered 7114-37289 be approved, and the treasurer be authorized to issue checks for their payment. Mr. Peterman, chairperson, Mr. Cameron member, Mr. Beazle member.
I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Will call both please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Beazle?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Blau?
Aye.
All right, I'm gonna mess it up again. We're gonna go back up to the reported committees, report to the Finance Committee and Council.
Okay, Mayor, the Finance Committee did meet on March 5th. I think you have a written summary of the meeting, and I'll just go through those in order. Any of that, there's any further discussion? The first thing that we discussed was salaries for elected officials. We have one salary for the mayor and another salary for the council members, the $600 a year for the mayor and $72 a year for the council members. The, it was reported that the average in North Kentucky is $9,600 for mayor and $4,048 for a council or commission member. It varies all over the place. Some of those, for example, comes from your court maybe on the higher side, and others are on the lower side. Anyway, that's the average. After much discussion, it was recommended by the committee, which reports would require some action out of the council to eliminate all compensation for council members and mayor, and consistent with the view that it's a voluntary, primarily a voluntary job, and that if your life becomes a voluntary in nature enough to earn a salary, and that administratively more convenient, I'd say any compensation. So, I guess with that, we're gonna go through the rest of the report. Then it would be appropriate to see if there's any discussions, any action council members want in it.
Sure. Is there any discussion or questions about this portion of the report?
Mayor, I believe that you can only act on the council member salaries, because this is your election year. I don't think you can act on the mayor's salary.
What, I'm not gonna lose my salary? Oh, come on. That's not fair.
All right, so that would be the current discussion. And Jan, that actually has to be taken, many actions taken has to be a certain number of days before the elections. So when would be?
I believe this has, you have to have a first reading, a second reading, and a publication before May 1st of this year, the year of the election.
So if we were gonna do it, and we had the normal council schedule, we'd have to have a first reading to know.
Correct.
It might take $72.00, you know, so we really need to change it to zero.
Well, I can tell you that we had some discussion committee about that, it's really worth doing, but this, is it more worth the changes than the, and, you know, I mean, it's 61, that doesn't really, I don't know what people.
Can we, if we have a motion to accept the report, or that recommendation, can that be construed as the first reading?
We should really have a document.
Can we make it zero? Is that possible? We can? Okay. Because I know in my work that because of the employees' working comp, you know, we are employees of the city, so I didn't know if it could make it zero, and I, we have working comp and unemployment and stuff that is paid regardless, so I wasn't sure how that actually works as far as.
But I don't know how you'll do a first reading without an ordinance.
So it would just be easier to keep it 72.
Someone can speak up. They're saying that they can't hear. They can't hear us.
Well, since timing, I mean, I, you know.
I think that's reasonable. Keep it as is.
As is, yeah.
I think that's the simplest form for right now.
Yeah, I would, to be honest, be pretty indifferent about the whole thing.
So, if we bring it up in two years, one year or two years?
It's the year of the election.
It'll be two years.
Two years.
So in two years, then we can do both the mayor and the council.
Correct.
That would be the time to do it. So, put in your calendar that we bring it up in February, so we have time to have two readings prior to the May 1st.
I think it'd be hard pressed to have a first reading, next meeting, and then an emergency ruling at the same time. I think that, it's not an emergency.
Especially in the circumstances where meetings can be.
Correct. Okay.
I see. I think the main takeaway was from the Finance Committee, we just didn't wanna raise it up to the average level, if that's what I'm taking from, so I think kinda jumping through extra hoops.
No action required at this time?
Yep. And just continue to, the tradition of being primarily a voluntary commitment that council members make. So, there were other items discussed. We, and we, I think, and I don't know what the position is, Ron, but we also had the audit presented for fiscal year ended June 30, 2019. We had none fault by the opinion from our auditors, which, you know, and for, I've been on state council, revenues exceeded the projections that we used to drag last year's budget, and expenditures were below the projected expenditure in the budget. So we ended up with, you know, revenues exceeding expenditures this year. So, with that, is it typical for the council to approve the audit as well? The Finance Committee approved it. I don't know what I can issue.
Yeah, I don't think it's required, yeah, so I mean, that's a requirement that we have when we've met, and typically report to the Finance Committee. Move to the second.
Yeah, report. Okay, so then the audit's been approved. Any questions about the audit? Finally, if you remember the last council meeting, a review of the city's debt capacity was requested, and I think the purpose of that was to, you know, go through this vision process, a lot of capital improvements were identified, those are generally financed with debt, so the question was, well, you know, what, given our current financial condition, how much money can we borrow? We discussed the fact that, you know, with the money, there's still a lot of discounts from the council that originally increased the payroll tax by a quarter percent, but that was done, but with the condition of, it was only a condition that that money used to be used for project improvements relating to that vision process, and that's what's been done, and that commitment's been honored, both by spending the money on capital improvements and using it to pay debt service from what we borrowed for those capital improvements. And so, again, the idea is to borrow money, the review of the outstanding debt, which that quirk sent payroll revenue has to be used to pay for, and how much capacity would be left. And in any event, bottom line is, it looks like there would be about $140,000 annually to pay for debt service through borrowing money, and that would translate into about borrowing $2.1 million over a 20-year period. Now, you can borrow money over short term or longer term. Well, some of the borrowing is done for the original, like the street skate projects support this 10-year debt, so the park debt, I believe, was 30-year debt. And so, you know, you can, and I will say, I don't know what interest rate assumptions use, but, I'd say that interest rates have gone down maybe even dramatically from the subsidy that we use, which means you have $140 million will pay for more president who's paying for less service. So, that is the capacity that we have to borrow money, and as we pay off existing debt, you know, more capacity will, that will result from that. Any questions about that? Any questions?
So, talking about borrowing $2.1 million?
Well, no, I mean, I think we have to identify projects.
Yeah, that's what I was, that's what I was curious about, okay. Just that it would be, it's a good suggestion to borrow it if we had identified projects, you know, that 2.1.
We're just saying what the debt service capabilities are, based on the recommendations from.
What was the impetus behind having, we're doing really well, obviously. We've been conservative. We have a lot of money in general fund and surplus. What was the idea, looking to continue to borrow, having that reserve available as well?
Well, I think that's a matter, it's open to discussion. I mean, we do have some cash reserves, you know, we could use those cash reserves. We also have run a couple of budget surpluses. We could look at, you know, budget funds. We had a discussion about the percentage of the budget that could be used to pay debt service, we're on the low end of that relative to some other cities. We think our long-term financial situation is good. There could be developments that occur that generate more revenue, for example, if there was redevelopment at the Fort Thomas Plaza, so, what's it called, by Jeff Wallin? Yeah, so, you know, a city's primary revenues come from payroll taxes and the insurance premium tax, and we're at the same rate that the county has on the insurance premium tax, so, you know, that's gonna be paid one way or the other, since we adopted it, it gets paid to the city, not to the county. And then, then there is the property tax. And the property tax, of course, can be projected very specifically, because your revenues can increase 4% a year. Now, that 4% hasn't covered increases in ongoing expenses like pension and healthcare. Those increases exceed the 4% that we can get from payroll tax, our most predictable source of revenue, but, you know, the revenue from employment tax could go up, you know, a fair amount, for example, if there's additional development, a lot of job creation. So, things they have to look at, Saney obviously is our largest private employer, and we would have to, you know, depending on what their employment was, there are things that affect future revenues, so.
Part of the conversation was also, do we have, we have reserves, do we pay some of those reserves to some of the debt that we have to save on interest, or do we take some of those reserves and invest that money to create interest in a positive way? And where, the conversation that was had with where the interest rates are now with the projects that we have coming up, it's, it was financially responsible to potentially borrow that money to pay for these, because we just did the visioning process, we have a lot of stuff across the board, borrow that money at low rates where we could, where we could potentially make money off of our capital that we have now with, through investments. And Joe and staff have looked into the financial differences there, and that's why we haven't moved forward with the $2.1 million loan, that's why it's an option, because that, that 140 annualized debt service, that, that has to be used towards debt service, that has to be used to pay off loans.
Or you could spend the cash.
Or you could spend the cash, yeah.
And the reality is, since we met, what, two weeks ago? You know, feds dropped the rate basically to zero today.
Yeah.
So, if we get into a project that requires some funding, whether we pay for it out of reserves or borrow the money, it's likely with interest rates this low, it'd be beneficial to borrow the money rather than using reserves. But it doesn't, you know, it depends. It's just, what the Finance Committee was doing was gathering information about what was possible with the funds that we have available from the debt service that's already paid off.
So a couple fundamental, though, account purposes, think about, we're doing that, you know, all these park assets that were done in 2009, financing about 12, 12. You know, those are, let's say, 30-year assets, they have a useful life of at least 30 years. Well, it probably makes sense for the taxpayers over that 30-year period to pay for the use of those assets, so you finance it over 30 years. I think that's a principle that makes some sense, rather than save up your money and then, you know, spend it, and then you have a mismatch between the people that paid in taxes for city services and the people, people that actually get to use them. The other thing that is certainly occurring with interest rates this low, they're much below the inflation rate for construction. So it may make sense, if, you know, I've heard this figure, that the construction inflation rate is around 8%. We can borrow money at 2%, you know, rather than wait four years and add 8% compounding to a construction project, that may, may make financial sense as well. So, but, but we don't have the projects yet, ask the Adams question, and, and so we're really gonna have to drill down on that and do some prioritization, but the fact that we did this visioning process is, you know, I think I have a big payoff, and then be, well ahead of the curve, being able to identify things that people in the city want.
So is there, is there action on that?
I entertain a motion to accept the committee's report, Joe.
Move to receive and file, I guess, or accept the report?
Accept the report. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Will call both please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Beazle?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Blau?
Aye.
All right, we're gonna jump around again. We're gonna drop down to ordinances. Because I wanna get Melissa all messed up, so.
I'm ready.
We're gonna, we're gonna do ordinances, and then municipal orders, and then we'll go back to reports.
Okay. This is a summary of ordinance number 002, 2020, an ordinance accepting the bid of MCI Metro for a five-year non-exclusive franchise renewable for three additional five-year periods for the use of the public streets, alleys, and other public grounds of the city of, of the city for the transmission and distribution of communication services through and for consumption within the city. MCI Metro is hereby granted a non-exclusive five-year franchise for the use of the city streets, alleys, and public grounds for the transmission and distribution of communication services through and for consumption within the city.
I entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? This is the second reading, so we'll call both please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Beazle?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Blau?
Aye.
All right, next ordinance, please. I'll call every Sunday sales.
This is a summary of ordinance number 003, 2020. Whoops. An ordinance amending ordinance 016, 2013, adopted on October 7th, 2014, and ordinance 019, 2013, adopted on January 21st, 2014, codified in chapter 111.09, changing the time when distilled spirits, wine, and malt beverages may be sold at retail within the city of Fort Thomas from 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. This ordinance establishes the hours during which alcohol may be sold in the city.
Okay, this is the first reading, I'll entertain a motion. No, no, no motion on the first reading, sorry.
Did they, did we say that was 11 to 9, we changed it to 9? Is that, okay, I was confused on that. Thank you, 11 to 9, I was thinking.
Oh, yeah.
All right, the next one.
It got shorter, I was like, wrong way.
Okay. This is a summary of ordinance number 004, 2020, an ordinance amending ordinance 016, 2013, adopted on October 7th, 2014, and ordinance 019, 2013, adopted on January 21st, 2014, codified in chapter 111.04, by changing the annual license fee for quota retail drink license and NQ2 retail drink license for the city of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky. The license fee for a quota retail drink license shall be $830 per annum. The license fee for NQ2 quota drink, retail drink license shall be $830 per annum.
Now, that is also a first reading, so no action necessary. Now down to municipal orders.
Municipal order, M002, 2020, a municipal order reappointing Hans Tinkler as a member of the Planning Commission of the city of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, and setting his term of office.
I entertain a motion for that one.
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Will call both please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Beazle?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Blau?
Aye.
All right, another municipal order.
Municipal order, M03, 2020, a municipal order reappointing Jim Binicky as a member of the Board of Adjustment of the city of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, and setting his term of office.
With approval?
Second?
Second.
Will call both please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Beazle?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Blau?
Aye.
Next one, please.
Municipal order, M04, 2020, a municipal order reappointing Joey Hood as a member of the Fort Thomas Street Commission for the city of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, and setting his term of office.
Move approval? Second.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Beazle?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Blau?
Aye.
Two more.
Municipal order, M05, 2020, a municipal order reappointing Barb Maniette as a member of the Fort Thomas Street Commission for the city of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, and setting her term of office.
Let's look at, second.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Beazle?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Blau?
Aye.
We're getting this down. Just one more left, okay?
Municipal order, M06, 2020, a municipal order reappointing Pat Haggerty as a member of the Design Review Board of the city of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, and setting his term of office.
Move to approve. Second.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Beazle?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Blau?
Aye.
Okay, now, we'll jump back up to the top. Visitors and Communications, anybody like to address council? Joe, you got anything? Okay. General Services and Recreation Annual Reports. Are you wanting, is that, no, that's fine, is that fine? Okay. Your abbreviated version, please.
Yes, sir. Thanks for having me this evening.
That was great, thank you.
I do wanna touch on a few, few highlights. I wanna thank our volunteer boards for their time and dedication, number one. Obviously, we had some, some big projects this year with One Highland. Also, but both our Planning Commission and Design Review Board spent a significant amount of time with that project. Alexander Circle and the Grow Grant Design Review Board, again, put significant time in these, and I think these will all be significant assets to our city as time goes on. From a building perspective, activity is pretty constant as to prior years. Additions and remodels have really been our bread and butter, and, and that's really very comparable to years past. Street resurfacing this year was, we had a pretty significant program, very aggressive, and our Public Works did, played a significant role in that, from the perspective of curbs and sidewalks contributing to those aspects of the street program. Other projects that, that we worked in were, were things such as the bike station at Tower Park, the tennis court resurfacing, we began the parking lot at the mess hall, you just approved tonight, finished surfacing of that area and some other areas. Significant amount of crosswalk improvements with the beacons along the avenue. Once again, those are just, just a few of the projects, I just wanted to note, that are kind of high-profile and very visible projects that, that we've done. From a facility maintenance perspective, the basketball courts were refinished. If you haven't been up there, there's some good pictures in the report, but a great asset to our armory, along with some bathroom upgrades, and windows at the mess hall are actively being refinished and, and worked on from a facility maintenance standpoint. Recreation, pickleball has really taken off this year. This really has exceeded expectations in, in the rec department. There have been a lot of partnerships or another point of this year, things such as hullabaloo, we had a wrestling tournament, preschool expo, continuation of our passport program, and a presence at the farmer's market. I'd also just like to state a note of thanks to the other departments. We work collaboratively on a regular basis, and professionalism throughout the city is unmatched, and I appreciate not only the other departments, but the contracted positions such as CT and Jan, that provide a great asset to the city. Lastly, I'd like to ask the mayor to sign a proclamation. I'm not sure if Melissa has that in front of her. I've asked this for the last three or four years, and it is a proclamation for Building Safety Month, for the month of May. Take great pride in this aspect of my position as a building inspector. Kentucky actually is one of the leading proponents of the code, and actually, the state organization of building inspectors won a national award this year for its involvement in the code. So, I appreciate that signature every year, Mayor, and this, this once again brings awareness and to building safety and the codes and its importance in our community. That's really all I have at this time. I do appreciate your time, and if you have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out to me. That's really all I have at this time. I do appreciate your time, and if you have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out to me. Thank you.
Excellent. Anybody have any questions? Thank you. Excellent job. Appreciate everything you do for the city. You're doing a great job. All right. Okay, we're gonna back up to the minutes. Well, I'm doing everything so messed up tonight. Anyway, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the February 18th meeting. So, would someone like to move it?
So, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussions or changes or, all right, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Mr. Collier.
Aye.
Mr. Beasley.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Blough.
Aye.
So, since I'm doing backwards, Jan, do we have to call the roll to be official?
I'd wait to the very end.
I'll, we'll do that at the very end. Okay, on the way out. All right, the Police Department Annual Report.
Good evening. I'll be short. Is there any questions? I actually would like to take, take a second to thank the officers for all their hard work last year, and all the officers who worked on this annual report, especially the sergeant day who put everything together. I think he did a great job. Particularly the front cover. I never thought we'd put our parking lot on the front cover. That's our parking lot. It turned out really neat, but do you have any questions?
Very appreciative of, of the department's work. Thank you.
Thank you. We really appreciate working with all of the departments. This is a great city to work for. We have a lot of fun putting this together. It's kind of our annual yearbook per se to go back and review years prior, so it's, it's a fun tradition.
That's great. Thank you very much. Sorry for the shortened version tonight, but given the circumstances, we wanted to do that. Okay, down to the monthly reports. Fire Department Report, you have any, Chief?
Mr. Mayor, I do not have anything, Board of Counsel, or anything answering questions you might have.
Anything for the Fire Department? Police Department, anything on monthly report? City Administrator Report. I know you have something on.
I do, just a few things, real quick.
Receive and file the report.
Oh, sure. Go ahead. You're good.
I would move to receive and file. One at a time, I guess, the police.
Sure, police. Fire was first. Oh, the Police Annual Report, okay.
Yes, I would move to receive and file.
Okay.
We didn't do it for General Services.
We didn't do it for General Services. Can we do them all at once? Can we do them all at once? Do them all at once.
And then we'll pledge allegiance to the law.
General Services, Recreation, Police Department Annual Report, the Fire Monthly Report, and the Police Monthly Report. Is that your motion, as I understand it?
That is my motion, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Mr. Collier.
Aye.
Mr. Beasley.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Blough.
Aye.
You know, we probably should've just started at the top. Okay, City Administrator's Report.
I just wanted to update Council just on a couple of topics. The, in your report, I, I did a, a little bit of summary. The North Fort Thomas Avenue sidewalk project, obviously moving slowly, but we did cross an important threshold with acquisition of all the construction easements and all the settlements with property owners necessary to proceed with the project. So, that is an important part of that, of this process. So, moving forward, we've created a timeline. This is subject to reviews because of the federal funding through KYTC. We've made a submission for the review, and then we'll proceed with bid processes and, and preparing those documents and putting all those things out on the street to proceed with the project. Ultimately, it is our intention to have the project under construction this summer, with the completion by the end of October, and we think as long as we don't get held up with the review process, that that project will proceed under that timeline this year. The more precarious issue is the resurfacing that we have scheduled behind that, and it appears that that may be deferred until next spring, just because of the timing and the lateness in the year. It's not optimal to do the resurfacing, and of course, our timeframe assumes that there will be no delays in the construction and we'll meet that deadline. Paired with that, in our street program that we have moving forward, we just received information on Crowell, that the Water District is intending to replace that water main, which may also delay that project, and those two would be carried out together in spring, most likely. So, we'll, we'll keep you informed on that. But it is good news, it is moving forward, it does look like it'll, it'll have a construction timeline this year. And the last item that I wanted to report on, as far as updates, is the Route 8, 6335 designation. Mayor Haas and myself have met with the other administrators and mayors, South Bank Partners, and the strategy moving forward currently is we've asked for audience with the Secretary of Transportation, Jim Gray, in hopes that we can do some problem solving at the state level, dealing with the approach to how this project might proceed, where some of the funding methodologies might be, what alternatives we have to just reconfiguring it into the form that it was previously, as a 35 mile an hour, double centerline type of, of access road, part of the transportation cabinet standards, if you will, and, and see if they'll look at that a different way for us. Our intention and hope is still to have a roadway that, that provides continuous throughway between the north and south part of the county. The fiscal board's on board with that concept as well. City of Dayton obviously feels the effects of that. So, it is an ongoing discussion. Staff is working with other entities in surrounding to try to push that through in that vein. We'll certainly keep Council updated on that, on that topic. Does anybody have any questions on either of those two items? And then the last thing that I wanted to report on tonight, we did have a staff meeting today, dealing with the issues of the coronavirus and the impact on delivery of city services. And, and Jan joined us in that conversation. We have made some decisions that affect our community, and they're mostly in line in keeping with what is being suggested and mandated through federal and state agencies. And, and basically, we've, we've come to several conclusions. First and foremost, we, we just wanna say that, you know, we're going to support our personnel in carrying out the duties to provide essential functions in our community. It's really important that our personnel feel protected. We've taken every precaution that we can. We have first responders that are, are subject to potential exposure, and we're certainly conscious of that, and that's very important to us. We're committed to our personnel that we'll take every precautionary method that we can for their safety, so that we can have that workforce to provide to our community. Secondarily, we'll be evaluating any revolt work, which is not easy for us with the type of services that a city provides, but we will do that with any personnel that we have that potential with. And again, the most important thing is, is our intention to continue to carry essential services and perform those duties for our, for our citizens in Fort Thomas. As far as effect on buildings, it's our intention at this point to maintain the city building as, as open during the regular workday. We'll restrict visitors to the lobby for delivery and for contact with our personnel in every instance that we can. So, we will be open for business. There will be posting of protocols, and I think we posted today with the Police Department, as far as protocol for how we will interact with the public. Again, for the public safety, for the safety of the individuals providing the service, it's important that we try to adhere to these items. Obviously, phone contact, emails, other types of communication other than direct contact is, is being prescribed, and, and is what we're hopeful will be the norm. Additionally, we are going to be doing cleaning, regular cleaning in our public spaces that are available, for example, in the city building, so we'll have people assigned for that activity. Secondarily, we have other facilities. As of today, the Armory Gymnasium will be closed. It will not be open to the public. We have contacted rentals of our meeting rooms and spaces in the Armory, and those will be discontinued until, you know, further notice, as this thing plays out. Additionally, we closed the museum. We do not have, we've had two cancellations of mess hall use for the next two weeks. We had our Easter egg hunt scheduled on the Saturday, and that has been canceled. And then Easter was the following weekend, so we basically have a month of, of no scheduled activity in the mess hall, and then we'll reevaluate that facility as well. We are revoking permits for any of our ballfield use with our organized sport groups, which includes soccer and baseball at this part, point in the season. And then, of course, we'll refund any funds that people put forth to, to rent those facilities. So, that's kind of where we are in the status at this point. Obviously, it's evolving. We'll be evaluating. Our management team will continue to meet and assess our needs for our personnel and what delivery we can provide. We're working with all the contracted agencies to, to date. Rumpy will not discontinue service. We've had no anticipated interruption of service from them. And again, we'll provide all the essential services that we have and offer our citizens moving forward and subject to some change. So, that's pretty much the status of where we are. Again, if anybody had any questions?
Ron, I just had a quick question. Is there any monthly taxes or fees we can waive for the restaurants or bars within town, or are all of those collected annually?
They are.
Okay. So, even like an occupational license, we couldn't temporarily pause that?
Those are mostly annual. I mean, we really haven't done an evaluation. I, I think that's a fair question. I, most fees that we have with our businesses, none of my taxes are collected annually.
Right.
Unless we got into some prorating process moving forward. Most everything else is just on a use basis. For example, the facilities I was describing, our picnic shelters and our meeting spaces on mess hall, rental courts and so forth, are all done off of a, a use fee. But we could certainly look into that aspect.
I can tell you, the best thing that, that we can do for our restaurants and businesses in town is actually utilize. Carryout, delivery, grub hub, those kinds of things, and also buying gift cards. If you buy gift cards, this is the worst time of year for restaurants, let me tell you, I know what I'm talking about. Cash flow is very, very low this time of year. So, for restaurants to stay in business when they're closed, it's gonna be virtually impossible to do. But if people go buy gift cards from their favorite restaurant, that's gonna influx them with cash to help them through this period. So, that's, and, and Mark did a great job on Fort Thomas Matters, putting something out there and encouraging people to utilize the businesses in Fort Thomas. There's other businesses too, but anyway.
Is there any money in the Grow Grant left, if this continues on, that we can potentially use instead of purpose? I think it's for further discussion.
Yeah, and, and again, I, I think it's, it's been defined by purpose, but certainly this council could adjust the appropriation of that fund, if you wanna look at it from a different perspective in that way.
Have, have we done that yet for this year coming up?
We have not. I mean, we had the expenditure, it would be moving into our next budget year.
Right.
So, as we prepare a budget, we could have that conversation with regard to appropriation of those funds.
Good suggestion, Dave.
Yeah, great suggestion.
And, and, you know, the last thing, I, you know, I commend our, our safety departments and our personnel. Everybody's working hard together. We work with a lot of agencies, and you're seeing a lot of reporting of how people are delivering service. We'll be posting all of these things that I just stated on our website. We'll try to update with any type of alert that we can on our Facebook site and on our website, for any changes to anything that will be placed on there that describes, you know, what our availability is for, for our facilities and services.
Do you want to do this?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, all right. What we're, I have an executive order here declaring an emergency, which as you know, helps us when it comes to different funding sources, just like we were talking about with helping the restaurants. There may be some opportunity for us to declare the emergency. So, I'm just gonna read through this executive order. Executive Order and State of Emergency Declaration, whereas on March 13th, 2020, President Donald J. Trump declared a national state of emergency in response to the coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic, and whereas on March 6th, 2020, Governor Andy Beshear declared a state of emergency in Kentucky in response to the first documented case of novel coronavirus COVID-19, and whereas COVID-19, a respiratory disease that can result in serious illness or death, and can easily spread from person to person, and whereas the emergency response of the city of Fort Thomas must be deployed rapidly to protect the health, safety, and welfare of citizens, and whereas Mayor, Mayor Eric Haas has determined that the novel coronavirus COVID-19 presents a severe and complex threat to the public health, safety, and welfare of citizens, that extraordinary emergency measures are warranted pursuant to KRS 39A .102 and KRS 39B .070, and whereas if it is necessary for Mayor Haas to coordinate an emergency effort with national, state, county, and other local agencies for maximum effective response. Now, and therefore I, Eric Haas, Mayor of the city of Fort Thomas, by virtue of the authority vested in me by KRS Chapter 39A and 39B of the Kentucky Revised Statutes, to hereby declare that a state of emergency exists in the city of Fort Thomas, and that I shall be exercising the authority granted to me through executive orders and through utilization of city personnel, services, equipment, and any necessary acts to manage this emergency. Subject to any orders of Governor Andy Beshear, I hereby order and direct any and all departments of the city of Fort Thomas to coordinate and cooperate with the Campbell Health Department, Kentucky Department for Public Health, any federal agencies to respond to the threat presented by the coronavirus COVID-19 by exercising the powers articulated in KRS Chapter 39A and 39B, and to provide information to individuals, businesses, organizations, and other entities to best prepare and respond to the COVID-19 State of Emergency Declaration. This state of, this declaration of state of emergency shall remain in effect until terminated by the issuance of another executive order, when I determine that a state of emergency no longer exists and the exercise of extraordinary measures are no longer required for the protection of the public health, safety, and welfare. Signed on the 16th day of March, 2020. Eric Haas, Mayor. I just need to sign that.
Do we need action on that?
No action. All right.
Well, I, I just, to that degree, I know we've got our Public Works meeting that's scheduled for next week.
Yes, supposed to be Tuesday.
Tuesday. What, what are we gonna do with that? And the, the only reason I, I bring it up is, the purpose of the public hearing is to bring the public in and, and hear it. In light of everything that's happening, obviously, we have a pretty empty council chamber tonight, but I, I think it's prudent that we push it back to understand what's happening a little bit, and I know what that does to our routine. But if, if the public is not comfortable being present.
Yeah, we've talked about this a little bit, and maybe we'll know something more by next week, see what.
I, I think our intention is to evaluate what options we have. We'll put it on a timeline to see if it works in a different way. You know, that process involves a lot of steps along the way, and if, and you heard me comment before about the timing of, of resurfacing, more for us to put work out for bid and get through all of the thresholds necessary to actually perform a program later this year. Some of those steps are important to, to occur in, in a timeline. If we can push it back, we will entertain that possibility. We'll also look at any options for conducting a meeting that allows individuals to feel comfortable and, and methods that we could maybe utilize, and we may not come up with any of those things, but we will communicate to the affected property owner what our decisions are and what their options are to participate in that, including a potential day that's delayed.
Has certified mail gone out to them yet?
Oh, yeah. So, as of now, they're, they're aware of, of the meeting.
Okay.
So, it would either be a cancellation or a notice of.
Have we gotten any feedback about, you know, everything that's happened?
We have no feedback.
I think proactively reaching out to those folks and just saying, here's kind of what we're thinking. I think, understanding that we're in a situation that we've not dealt with before, they would probably be a little bit lenient with that, with us, knowing that if we're providing information and they have an opportunity for input, knowing that it might not be in the circumstance that they're used, used to, I think, as long as we're reaching out to them and saying, provide us feedback, I think that's, we should take those steps, if we could.
Yeah, and again, that's our intention. We'll look at any possibility to do it in a different way. It, it most certainly would not be our traditional open public meeting.
Sure.
In this forum, like we are tonight. If we could do it in a different way, we'll offer that. If we don't feel we can do that effectively, we will probably delay. In worst case scenario, it just puts us way off the schedule, and we may not.
Yeah, and to me, I mean, that, I, I get it, it's gonna be a pain in the butt, but, you know, when they say, don't congregate in groups of 50, and then today they moved that down to 10, I mean, we're sort of not going. to 10, I mean, we're sort of not going along with that recommendation already. To me, it's worth it to push it back and create a little inconvenience. Sorry, Ron, but to me, that's, it makes sense to do that.
I mean, just to avoid any complete confusion, these meetings are open to the public. We can't act without these meetings being open to the public. No, there's not gonna be any executive order or any else that would limit people's attendance at these meetings. The combination of putting us on Facebook tonight is a great step, and, you know, people that might want to attend, at least they get to observe this law, but, you know, all these actions are gonna be open and in the public.
Sure. I'm just, I'm looking at the difference between a public hearing for the benefit of the committee to hear the public versus taking action in a public meeting today. I think, you know, if that's our goal of that, is to hear from the public, and they're not comfortable being in public, then we have to maybe...
I wanna make sure their voice is heard. Understand what you're saying, that's the whole point of that meeting, you know? So, I'm gonna piggyback on that a little bit, because I know there, when that committee gets together, you know, there's an opportunity maybe for us to get together early and discuss something that I've been concerned with and a few of us around have been concerned with, and whether we have that meeting or not, it's still on our schedule. So, I know there's been a lot of talk around town of possibly lowering speed limits on side streets and maybe impossible school zones, so I think it would, me personally, you know, I'm Chair of the Public Safety Committee, Kenny is Chair of the Public Works Committee. I think that's where it would go to start that discussion, and since we're all three getting together, I'd like to possibly discuss that, make a motion to discuss that probably prior to that meeting, to get the ball started.
I think, you know, if we're not gonna have the public hearing, we're not going to convene in a group, because it's still a public meeting.
Sure.
The members would have to be there, but it would have to be in a public meeting, so...
Well, it would be less likely to draw that much people, but either way, I'd still like to get it on the next time that the committee does meet together, so...
And I'd like to keep it on our radar too, that topic, you know, side street speed limits and some other safety issues, but I mean, now's not the time to schedule or call for more meetings, but I mean, it needs to be on our radar when the time is right.
Well, I mean, we can make a motion to put it on a committee meeting, but it doesn't necessarily, it doesn't actually go on the committee meeting until we have one, so just because we voted on it today, we're not, we don't have to set a time.
Well, there aren't regular scheduled committee meetings unless there's a reason to have one. Committees don't regularly meet, and so we would have to move to have that meeting when the time was right, which could happen quickly, but...
I don't disagree. I just wanted to make sure that gets out there, you know? I was just trying to piggyback. Maybe we make a motion to hear it, and if the meeting on Tuesday gets canceled, then we don't talk about it, because we already have one.
Is that a motion?
Well, I mean, I think it's, we can meet 45 minutes or 30 minutes early, and if the meeting gets canceled, then we just move it on to something else.
Is that a motion to have that subject and refer that to the poll?
Yes, I would like to make that motion and refer that.
Any further discussion?
I'm not far on the motion.
It's to review the speed limits for side streets and then possible school zones.
Safety committee meeting?
Safety, you know, for the...
For a safety committee meeting?
No, for a Public Works Committee meeting, because I think it would be better in Public Works than Safety, because it would be, it has to do with streets, but I'm the Chair of the Public Safety or Chair of Public Works.
Right, or a joint committee meeting of those two committees is, might be a more appropriate motion, but I mean, that would just have to be when the time is right, you know? I mean, we can't schedule those meetings until we know they're safe.
Well, I mean, we are gonna have a meeting next Tuesday, right? Indenitively? So, we can make that motion to hear it, and then if the meeting gets canceled, we just cancel the meeting and move it to the next time when we are...
But the agenda for the Tuesday meeting is pretty narrow, and it's focused on these street improvements and the assessments involved.
You would have to...
Is it Tuesday, a committee meeting, or is it Wednesday?
It's a public hearing.
It's a public hearing held by the Public Works Committee.
So, it's really not a committee?
No, but the committee is there, because it's Public Works Committee, and we could just meet 30 minutes early. I'm just trying to streamline this stuff.
I thought the motion was like any other referral to committee, it got referred, and then the committee sat there and made.
Okay, yeah, that's...
That's what I thought I was saying.
I'm okay with that. I mean, if we say, yeah, let's, when the time is right.
Yeah.
That's fine, that's what I said earlier, then, I think it got convoluted there, so, but I'm happy to, I just wanna make sure that it's...
Not on Tuesday.
That's fine. Not on Tuesday, but I would like to discuss it in the next committee meeting.
So, Steph, Steph hasn't researched that, but we can research it and set it for committee at an appropriate time.
Are we referring to both committees? Or are we doing...
I think just Public Works.
Public Works, okay.
It's a safety issue.
Yes. Usually, don't you refer that to public safety?
It's a safety issue, you know? I mean...
Our speed limits, not the streets. I mean, it doesn't bother me what, which committee we refer to.
On the streets, but...
You're doing it for the safety of pedestrians and the...
Fine, happily, happily take it to public safety.
Or I'm all for a joint meeting.
That works too, I think, I agree.
I mean, both committees.
Yeah, that's kinda well.
It's appropriate in public safety committee, so if you're referring to public safety, does that require voters? Do we need to vote on that?
To a committee. My second, I'll recognize that it's to public safety.
Okay, and there's a second.
Sure, that works, yeah.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Mr. Collier.
Aye.
Mr. Beazle.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Blough.
Aye.
Actually, I'd like people on both committees.
Mark, would you like to say something about this? Could you arrange that? That's awesome.
Sure. Thanks, Mayor. The next city council meeting as scheduled, which is April 20th, will have a guest joining us. Hal McCoy, who was a longtime beat writer of the Dayton Daily News, is going to be visiting the city that day, throwing out the first pitch at the Highlands Newcastle baseball game, visiting us in our council chamber before, and so the mayor has made a proclamation that he will read on that day stating April 20th being Hal McCoy Day. So, we are very excited to have him here. I think that's gonna be a cool thing.
Hopefully, it can still happen.
Yes, if the baseball game is occurring, I think he's gonna come either way though.
All right. One other item on our agenda. Call the roll, please.